Chris, do you want me to go get Armin?
I don't know, he usually pops in right at the end, but.
Okay.
He was definitely, I communicated with him earlier, he's definitely coming.
He's course home.
Well, we're waiting for Armin now, I will, I'll open the meeting and I'll read the script. Armin heard it eight times by now. So the script is, we're required to just go through this before every meeting that's done remotely. And this is the, as someone knows, this is the Maynard Select Board meeting. Tuesday, June 2nd. I'm the chair and I will confirm that my other members are here, that I know. And they'll just do it by voice and it's David Gavin.
Yes.
Melissa.
Present.
Thank you, and Justine St. John.
Yes, here.
Will be along, I'm sure, and also from the staff, Greg Johnson and Megan Zamudo.
Here.
And also with us tonight is Town Council Kate Federoff. So, good evening, this is an open meeting of the Maynard Select Board. It's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. It says due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised, you know, I directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. And further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded to the public so that they can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. Unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will actually feature some public comments as we do have a public hearing at some point during the meeting scheduled. So during that time, there will be comments and participation by those who are willing to participate. For this meeting, we are convening by Zoom and that was posted on the town's website. And also was identified how public may join. This meeting is being recorded. And some of the attendees are participating by video conference. And accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And take care not to screen, share your computer because anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Although the meeting materials for this evening are on board docs. And all the materials except executive session are available to the public. We recommend that the members, the members in the public follow along on the agenda posted on board docs. And the ground rules, we are, once we, once we open the meeting and turn to the first agenda item. Please speak effectively and clearly so that we can have accurate minutes. I will introduce the speakers as they appear on the agenda. And after they conclude their remarks, I will go through the list of members of the board. Inviting each to provide any comment, questions, or motions, and then any comments will be held after the board is finished. So most importantly, and I think we need to do this now, is everybody that's not actively speaking or actively involved in the discussion, please mute your computers. And then when you do, when it is time to speak, please speak clearly so we can again generate accurate minutes. So after after the members have spoken, we'll afford public comments. I'll ask if there are public comments and then those who wish to speak identify themselves and we'll go one at a time through those who wish to speak. And the, we'll try to limit the public comments to three minutes if reasonable. And other than that, we'll, it won't be much for public comments tonight, but every vote, finally, every vote that we take tonight will be conducted by a roll call vote. So those are kind of the ground rules we've been operating under for the last 10 weeks, 10 weeks. And the meeting has been open and now our next order of duty is a normal public comment section, which is separate than the public comments that will be afforded during the public hearing. So you have any public comments this evening? Okay. Second number on the agenda, number two is the minutes. We have a set of minutes from our May 20th, 2020 meeting to accept and approve. And the motion reads move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of May 20th, 2020 as shown. And authorize staff to use the board's signature stamps for our approval. Have a second.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments about the May 20th meeting minutes? Okay, all those in favor, David?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armin, you back?
Yes.
All right. You approve?
Yes.
Okay, and I approve as well. All right. This week, we had several correspondence items and they were A through H, and make a motion to accept and approve correspondence items A through H as shown. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Both. Does anybody have any questions or conversation about the eight items in the correspondence tonight?
If I may, Chris, I just want to comment quickly on two issues, both police related, which I'm sure the rest of the board has similar sentiments, but initially, the retirement of Carl Nyholm from the police force after a lengthy time of service should be recognized by us. I think he's, you know, he's well recognized by a lot of our residents for, you know, his work downtown and I know he's done a lot with I know he's done a lot with the kids at times that goes unnoticed where he's actually made his way in and sat down with the kids on half days and whatever and sat around and chatted with them when they're hanging out downtown during those half days. And I know that's made an impact because I've heard about it from a number of residents. And Carl has always been a kind, gentle giant, for lack of a better phrase. Just a really nice guy to work with and a nice guy to know, so I wish him a lot of luck. And then the second thing is, and I'll leave this to you, Chris, to sort of summarize, or even if the chief perhaps wants to, wants to comment on it, I see the chiefs there on Officer Seeley and his heroic actions in helping a family to escape from what could have been a tragedy for the family and, and doing so with the utmost of, you know, professionalism as we expect from our, from our police officers here in Maynard. So congratulations to Officer Seeley.
Yeah, I would echo that about, about Carl and that, you know, like we did with the last couple of guys to retire, you know, hopefully we can do something more public and more official once you know, a real sense of normalcy returns. But as far as Officer Seeley goes, I think, Mike, would you mind just kind of, you know, for those of us who haven't seen the note, I would just be reading it off of the thing where maybe you could speak to a little more, you know, in depth than the note allows.
Yeah, it, on March 1st, and let me say, usually this would be something we would do in front of the select, maybe presented and it'd be more official, but, and that's why this happened back on March 1st and literally it was going to be scheduled for that next meeting that got canceled due to the coronavirus, but on March 1st, they received a call, it was late at night, of smoke in the house and house possibly on fire on Brown Street. Officer Seeley was right there, he was just in that area quickly and he arrived well before any firefighters, well before any of this. The family was already outside, but the family pets were still inside. He went in and the fire was of the manner that it was very dark, thick smoke. So he kind of couldn't see going in and going around, but he went in, was able to find one of the pets. I forget, I forget which one, the cat or the dog first.
I think it was the cat first from what
It was the cat, it was the cat first, okay. And then, you know, he brought the cat out to them and then went back in the house and got the dog out. You know, the family said they were gonna, they would be glad to come down for a ceremony down with the selectmen and how we present it, but you know, as we recognize, you know, offices, you know, don't always do good work, but when they do, they should be recognized also.
No, I agree, and then, so hopefully we'll have that, you know, we'll get that opportunity soon to do those things that we've missed the time to do. Thanks, Mike. So that being said, does anybody have any, any comments or questions about the remaining six items on the correspondence agenda tonight? All right, so again, the motion was to approve, accept and approve them and we'll go down the list, David?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am yes as well, and then that's those. And then we have one consent agenda item tonight, a cemetery deed, and I make a motion to accept and approve the one consent agenda item as shown. And also to authorize the use of our digital signatures for processing. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any conversation about this cemetery deed? All right, David?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
I am yes as well. Okay. All right, so a public hearing. Is, we can open the public hearing now, it's 7:13. We're opening the public hearing, the public hearing is on a marijuana license. And I will read the notice as posted and required, and it is, the notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 94G and Section 3, as amended, that a public hearing will be held Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 7:10 PM. Originally posted to be held in the Fowler School out of 23 Tiger Drive, Maynard, on the application for a new retail license for a marijuana establishment as a retail off-premise license for Green Star Herbals, Inc. Doing business as Green Star Herbals at 22 to 24 Main Street, Maynard, Mass. The manager will be Napoleon Brito. A copy of this application is on file with the Office of the Selectmen. The second motion is to approve the application for a retail marijuana license to Green Star Herbals, Inc. Doing business as Green Star Herbals at 22 to 24 Main Street, Maynard. The Cannabis Control Commission approved this establishment on November 6th, 2019. The license will be held in the Office of the Selectmen until the final occupancy is completed and issued by the Maynard Building Commissioner and the Maynard Fire Departments. The Maynard Board of Selectmen is required to authorize the use of their signatures by the Office of the Selectmen to process the license application. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you. So just, just so everybody knows, to clarify, as we're reading through these things, on occasion, we say select board and other times it's Board of Selectmen. In anything that's still considered an official document, we have to use the term Board of Selectmen until such time as that's changed, but for all intents and purposes, we're moving towards and calling ourselves the Maynard Select Board, so that's why if there's any confusion over the two names, that's what it is, anything that, but anything that's legal until such time as it's changed by a bylaw vote at town meeting, we're still using Maynard Selectmen, Board of Selectmen. So that being said, the hearing is open and Megan or Greg, I know you guys have been working with this, so if you guys want to kind of lead us in the discussion.
Sure, this is Megan Zamudo, Assistant Town Administrator. And we received this application from Green Star Herbals at the end of April. This will be the town's first cannabis retail license application. So there was certainly a strong level of scrutiny in reviewing it. And the applicant was extremely thorough in providing all the documents that we requested. There are a couple of things I wanted to note about the application, there are several documents in board docs. One item that is not included on board docs that we asked for is the designation and identification of all individuals on staff. And this is because beyond the staff of the partners that have been identified, they have not hired additional staff. So, you know, I spoke with the applicant and when they do hire any other staff members prior to opening, they will provide that information to the town, so we have that understanding. I did add a few documents to board docs this morning. When doing research for tonight's public hearing, I noticed a document on the Cannabis Control Commission's website that had a kind of a summary of their application so far. And in it, I did notice an error on the Cannabis Control Commission's document in the hours of operation. So I reached out to the applicant who contacted the Cannabis Control Commission and that, that has, there's been correspondence from the CCC that they will be correcting those hours. I think it was really an error on the side of the CCC and not really what the applicant had submitted. Finally, I had one question about that, that same document, which is in your packet, because it did mention hiring staff from the city of Chelsea. And so their attorney, who's, who's on today, wrote a letter that's in the packet that kind of explained why, and it's really because Green Star's company is not just in Maynard, they're going to have other locations. And, you know, they had to create a positive impact plan. And they referenced the city of Chelsea on that, so that, if you see that on a document, I had a question, I thought maybe it was an error, but it's, it's part of their larger corporation as a whole. So at this point, you know, we, we do have Attorney Federoff here, but from, you know, my standpoint, I feel that this is a complete application. And, you know, we've had a good relationship with this applicant to date, they've been extremely responsive and so I'm happy to answer any questions or, you know, if the applicant or Attorney Federoff have any points they'd like to make.
And if I may, I'm Attorney Joe Claymont, I'm representing the applicant this evening. The applicant is on as well, Tom Morey, and I believe Mike Allen, head of security, is on as well. I didn't know if you had any questions or I could take you through a brief presentation if you like. We're a long way down that road, our excuse me, the planning board approved a special permit about a year ago, so it's been a long haul to get to this point, to get in front of you for the licensing and I'm happy to, one, answer any questions, or if you'd like a brief presentation as to where we are right now, I'm happy to do that.
Chris, you unmute.
Does anybody require a brief presentation? Would anyone like a brief presentation from the board? It's been like, to, to point both Megan and the attorney made it, it's been a long haul, but I don't know, does anybody have any questions, David?
I do, and this is for, I guess, Megan and Kate as to the relevance as to whether or not it's significant or not. I noticed that, and the chief's here, so he can answer his, his comment. I noticed that the chief, Chief Stowers and Rick Asman, in their comments that were included in the packet that we were provided, they commented last, back in May, both of them saying that work just started, the chief has not yet signed off on sprinklers for safety purposes as of the time, and I don't see any update from the chief indicating that. Is that something that is affecting us now, or is that something before doors open? How does that apply? And similarly, you know, the chief, Chief Noble, who's here, he can comment on any police issues that are of concerns because it looked like the last comment we got from any of the, the three boards that are, or the three roles that are important here, fire, police and, and building inspector, all said the same thing, that nothing's happened inside the building.
Sure, I can, I can speak to that from a permitting standpoint. Prior to getting their final license from the Cannabis Control Commission, the applicant needs to have all local sign-offs, so this is part of that process, the Board of Selectmen's local sign-off. But it also includes their health department, the building department, fire, police will need to, as Chief Noble will probably state, you know, he'll have to review and do a final walkthrough, review the, the security plan. So, you know, the applicant's been in touch with all of the, the key players and all of those kind of permitting procedures do have to take place prior to the final license, which is what they need to actually open their doors.
Or is it traditional?
This is Tom Morey, how you doing all? Joe, I think it's really important that you bring them up to date on, on where we are in the process. So I think that's going to clear up a lot of things.
Go ahead then, Tom.
Joe?
I'm sorry, you, you wanted, I think the board really was okay without my formal presentation. I think they've gone far enough down their road that they've got
No, I just wanted to get the update on where we stood with the licensing.
Oh yeah, the licensing for them CCC is, we've got the provisional approval now, I think they're aware of that.
This is not the Tom and Joe show. So the question, the question on the table, Tom, so that Joe understands, was not anything to do with the CCC. The question was, how does the town of Maynard, you know, react, being the building inspector, the fire chief and the police chief, where we stand with those three things? And I think the question was kind of directed towards our council, Kate Federoff, is, I think where David was going before someone jumped in was, is it typical that we would approve this before we have those three sign-offs in hand?
Yeah, so, so think of it in the terms of your liquor licenses, that's where your experience lies, right? So what you can do to give yourself some comfort is to, if, if you're inclined to approve this license, you can approve it subject to final sprinkle, inspection, Board of Health inspection, all, all local inspections. And then, just like you would in the liquor license context, you issue the actual certificate once those inspections are complete, so it's essentially a seamless process, so they will not have to come back to the board. It's pretty easy, no problem.
Correct, so that's, that's the typical process.
Yeah, it's very typical, just like your alcohol licenses. And for the record, for anyone who joined late, I am Kate Federoff, even though I am noted as Jeffrey.
All right, so, I mean, that being said, that's, that's typical, so David, did you have any, anything else?
No, and my comment was strictly, you know, as I've been throughout this process with not only this group, but all the others ones that have come before us, I'm, I'm pretty conservative relative to how we move forward because this is a new industry to us and we want to make sure that we're following the guidelines as they are presented to us as closely and quickly and as closely and securely as possible to protect Maynard and to protect our, to make sure we're doing things the right way. So that we don't, in the future, have somebody come in and say, well, you didn't do that on this one, so why are you doing it on that one? And we, and we're just following the rules, that's why I want to make sure.
Yeah, that's all. Armin? Comments?
No, I'm good, I think we had, you know, ample presentations by Green Star in the past and I'm comfortable with the, you know, with the, the process so far.
Okay, Melissa?
No, I think Green Star has been very thorough and responsible throughout the whole process, so I'm completely comfortable approving this pending local inspections going forward.
Okay, and Justine?
I agree with what everyone else has said, so that's, I'm wondering, do we change the motion to reflect that as far as to make all local approvals as opposed to just the approvals of the two that you mentioned?
Right, so before, yeah, so before we vote, I'll, I'll, I'll change it, yeah.
Okay.
And then Mike, did you, Mike, Chief Noble, did you have many, any comments that you wanted to add about any of the, you know, your involvement?
No, that was exactly the same thing that I said in the process that, you know, I couldn't give the final sign-off, they hadn't done any of the, the construction. But their security plan is very thorough, it's, you know, again, the good part is, is the first one, they set the bar high for everybody else to follow. So, yeah, once, once they're done, I've talked to their consulting, consultant, Mike Allen, you know, he'll give me a heads up when things are in place, so we can do a complete walkthrough, make sure everything is done, that they said they're gonna do.
Okay.
Chris?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw the previous motion that was as printed in the agenda and I will change it to the following. And make a motion to approve the application for a retail marijuana license to Green Star Herbals, Inc. Doing business as Green Star Herbals at 22 to 24 Main Street, Maynard. Cannabis Control Commission approved this establishment on November 6th, 2019. This license will be held in the Office of the Selectmen until the final occupancy is completed and issued by the Maynard Building Commissioner and the Maynard Fire Departments, as well as any other local departments whose approval is needed. As their approval is needed. Do a second.
Second.
All right, so now it would be the time, if anybody from the public would like to make any comments or have any questions, this would be the time, so if we have any public questions or comments, one at a time, if anybody wants to speak out, speak up. This would be the great time. Okay, hearing no public comments, seeing nobody waving at us furiously, we'll vote on the, the approval of the Maynard's first marijuana license. David Gavin?
Yes.
Armin Diabakarian?
Yes.
Melissa Levine-Piro?
Yes.
Justine St. John?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so that's unanimous, yes, Mr. Morey and Joe. And so I just want, from our standpoint, as a board, and maybe is, you know, maybe, I don't know if Megan or Greg want to say anything, but I, I just want to say that we've appreciated the way you guys have come to us and the professionalism and all the, anytime we've asked you guys for anything, you guys have been right up front with it and giving it to us and responding in a timely manner and that's greatly appreciated because as David, as David kind of sort of pointed out, we haven't had that success with everybody, so thank you that you guys have set the bar very high in Maynard for this to happen, so we do appreciate it as a community.
One last comment, Chris, that sort of plays into your comment. For, you know, we get criticized a lot for process being, you know, taken too long or whatever. I think it's important to point out that this group was not the first to come into Maynard looking to bring their business of this nature to Maynard, yet despite that, they're the second, they're the first one approved and
I think they were the third, were not, weren't they, Greg?
It's been a long time.
Second, I think they were the second.
Second, a third, but anyways.
But the point is that, that, you know, if, if the process is done properly and there's cooperation from all the parties and everybody's upfront about what's going on, things move along swiftly.
Good point.
Yeah, yep, so
Tom Morey, if I could just pop in when, when I could.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Great, thanks, I just wanted to let you know where we stood. We are beginning the construction on the property right now and we hope to have it all built out by the end of summer. And then at that point, we would have inspections and we would be able to get our final license and then we hope to be operational by the end of the year, so that's, that's the goal right now.
Right, and to clarify, he's referring to, there's a, there's one more approval by the Cannabis Control Commission. So it's a lengthy process.
Okay, well, we appreciate, we appreciate it, so, and Kate, thank you for your help as well.
Thanks for having me, guys, have a great night.
Take care, Jeff. Take care, Jeff.
Thanks, Kate.
All right, so I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Give a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, just wave. That's everybody, so the hearing closes at 7:30.
Congratulations.
Congrats, good luck.
Good luck on the rest of the way, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board for the kind comments and all the assistance we've got from everyone in the town. We very much appreciate it's made it an easier process for us to get through. It's a learning curve for all of us and we do appreciate all the help we've received. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, Economic Development Report. Jack, I guess, Jack? You have the floor, Jack, or Greg, do you want to make any comments before we start with Jack or?
This is an introduction. Megan, Megan will definitely be the bulk of the talking, but I, I want to at least take the opportunity to, to commend Jack and Megan and the rest of the economic development team. So I can see, you know, Linda Thayer's on here, I can see Bill Nemzner's on here, I see a lot of folks that are, and Rachel Banky from, from MBA, a lot of people contributing. And it's a lot of complicated, stressful work. So I appreciate everyone's hard work they're putting into it and, and we'll do the best we can and I, and I have confidence in this team that we're going to try to do the best by the community. But beyond that, I do want to let Megan and Jack speak because they put a lot of, they put a, they've done a lot. So, yeah, I'm impressed.
Okay. Megan's really been leading this, so Megan, take it away.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah. Hold on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Okay, thank you. So today, as we mentioned, we do have representatives from the Economic Development Committee, the Maynard Business Alliance, and I was happy to see several business owners in Maynard participate on this call so far, so I think it's going to be a good discussion. Really what I want to talk about is a menu of options for a pedestrian-friendly downtown to support Maynard businesses during this really unsettling time. The goal is to increase visitors to downtown while observing state guidelines for state interactions at each phase of reopening. So, you know, when we think about this, we have a couple of things we can offer. There's, you know, the physical space and then there's streamlining the regulatory framework for assisting businesses use that space. We're thinking about how we can use municipal space for outdoor dining, retail, public art, pedestrian access, et cetera. So tonight, you know, I'm showing a menu of options to try to meet this objective. These options are not mutually exclusive. And, you know, when we were working with the Business Alliance, they, they requested that we come up with a few different options so businesses could react to them and see what their impact would be. So this is, this is really the presentation that started that. I want to note that there are certainly logistical challenges for each option. None of these have been fully vetted at this point. It's really more of a higher level discussion to think about how we can contribute and what we can do to help. But staff is, in the Economic Development Committee, you know, we're really committed to doing whatever we can to overcome these issues and try to support businesses however we can. The Maynard Business Alliance has been a fantastic partner trying to help us understand what the impacts would be in some of these options. They were able to get a survey out over the weekends and provide results to us that is, that will really help us kind of color this conversation. So really, like I said, today, I'm just hoping to provide some information, generate discussion about these options and think about this overall concept.
Megan, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but as, as we, as we're going into this, and we're going into this, the presentation, are we looking at this presentation strictly in COVID-19 times or are we looking in this presentation beyond that as well?
Good, good point, Chris. I feel like sometimes I'm so, so brained into this that I, I probably didn't take a step back, so that, that's a really good point. Right now, we're thinking about what Phase Two is going to look like and how we can support businesses as some of these restrictions start to loosen up. And it's definitely a challenge because I think just Saturday or June 1st, Sunday, we received some information about what it would look like for restaurants and retail operations in Phase Two. But that information, I think, is going to be fully out this coming weekend. So we're just trying to think about, okay, if, if the governor says outdoor, you know, commerce is okay now, then how can we help expand the footprint or, you know, make accommodations to support these businesses during this kind of phased reopening?
Okay.
So, option one, we were looking at, you know, this is the best practice in, in other communities. It's, it's done in other places. And we're thinking about, we're thinking about closing Main Street to automobiles. I don't want to spend a ton of time on this one. You know, there are, there are pros and cons to this approach, but I heard loud and clear from the business community that really thinking about a closure would be more detrimental than other options on this list. So, you know, I think at this point, we should probably move on. I do want to note that the Economic Development Committee did support this option at a meeting on Thursday to really try to drill down and focus the conversation with the business owners, which we did have, or which, you know, Linda and Rachel were able to have with the businesses over the weekend. We received the survey results. Many of the businesses thought this would be a, a serious problem and would prefer other options. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to kind of answer any questions about it, but I think it might be more worth our time to, to look at what else we have here. So option two is to think about, you know, how we can utilize space that, you know, might not, might not be utilized as well right now. So we're thinking about some, you know, pocket food courts, which, this is one option. Here you can see a zucar and elbow peel. You know, could we potentially fit some tables or, you know, have some outdoor commerce in this little pocket? This is another view, but the same area. There are other areas that have been identified. This is just one example of how we can use some space to, you know, support local businesses. Some pros to this is that it could be semi-permanent. We could have, you know, tables or, you know, some hard scape out there for a period of time without having to move it. It would not necessarily reduce parking, but it would, you know, this one in particular would reduce access to nail or court. So, you know, that's something to consider. Some kind of issues and opportunities here, would it allow for enough space to socially distance? You know, there's just going to be more measurements and, and more things to think about as we go, if we decide to go down this path. We did have a land survey done recently so we can determine, you know, what is the town's land to offer if, if that was something we wanted to consider. And would it provide enough space for interested businesses that wanted to kind of spill outside their specific storefront? A third option here is to allow for a parklet and the use of public space. So this could be sidewalks in some areas, it could be the parking spaces in front of a storefront. You know, there's a few different options for this one. I think the, some of the pros to this are that it's really flexible for different situations. So, you know, our geography in our center, some people have wider sidewalks in front of them, some don't. We could really look at each business that was interested and find a plan that would work for them to try to expand some of their space. Boston, the city of Boston is taking this approach at this point because they also have, you know, changing geography depending on what part of the city they're in. If we were to pursue this option, my recommendation from my office would be to create a streamlined application so that a business that was interested could fill out one form, you know, come to the Office of Municipal Services and we would work with them to find a way to make it happen. There, you know, this, there were previous parklets in Maynard, so this wouldn't be the first. There was a pilot program a few years ago that was very successful. Our staff did a lot of surveying and it was, it was very popular, so that's, that's definitely a pro. And it would really allow for businesses that want to participate to participate. So if you, if you were not interested, you know, you would not have to do this and it would still allow for a specific amount of parking along the main corridors. Some cons to this approach are that it could be more, a little more work than another approach for, for businesses because they'd have to apply for it and they'd likely have to secure the, the barriers if they were to think about parking spaces. We don't have enough inventory to kind of block off several different parking spaces for safe kind of use. So they might, there might be an investment on that side of things. So some, you know, kind of potential issues here, and it could be more logistical challenges, but honestly, all of them have logistical challenges and, you know, we're up to the challenge. Would parklets have enough space for social distancing? You know, if we're thinking about retail, if you rack some clothing or if we're thinking about how many tables could we fit in a parking space, there's still more work to be done there. And what types of barriers would be appropriate if, if there's still going to be vehicular traffic on the corridor? A fourth option is to think about, you know, the use of nail or court. This builds a little bit on the ULI study that was done in December. We do have a really big amount of space here. Would it be appropriate to, at some period of time, block a period, a, a portion of it off from parking to do something else? So there is, a pro is that there's plenty of space. We also have a grant from the Downtown Development Initiative that we're trying to, that we're working on currently to centralize the dumpsters in nail or court so that it will definitely improve the aesthetics of the area. So that's happening regardless, but, you know, just something to think about when we're thinking of the use of this space. Some cons, you know, it could be less convenient for businesses. If, if you're located further out from the center, you might have to travel in to set up your wares or, or food or something like that, so, you know, that could be a problem. It would impact more parking, absolutely, and, you know, people would be a little bit further away. So, you know, some of the questions, like I mentioned, would this be inconvenient? Could, could a restaurant set up more like Maynard Fest or a food truck festival? And these, these ideas are kind of ever-changing as we're getting the feed, the feedback from the governor about what's appropriate and what's not appropriate under these phases. So I'm not sure if that would really fit under Phase Two, but potentially later on. And we'd also need to separate between parking and dining for safety, of course. Okay, I'm wrapping up, this is one of my last ones here. This is also building on the ULI study, you know, we, either takeout is really doing, helping a lot of businesses right now. And, you know, it's part of the reason closing down the street probably wouldn't work because how would businesses, you know, really be able to facilitate their, their takeout business? But as the weather's getting better, people might be interested in getting takeout and sitting outside. So we do have Veterans Memorial Park right up here. There's a article at Town Meeting through the CPC to get some funding to purchase more tables and chairs. You know, thinking about what this space is down here, could we add tables and chairs that are, that are distanced that could serve kind of a multipurpose outdoor seating option for the center? So, you know, I think at this point, I'm really just kind of asking for some initial impressions, things you think we should be concerned about or should look into more and just get some general feedback, you know. We're going to be continuing this conversation with the businesses. It was started over the weekend through the MBA. We really want to try to find a plan that works for everyone and, you know, supports businesses. We don't, we don't have much money to give or a grant program at this point. So how can we support businesses through the property we own, you know, through streamlining our regulations and just trying to be as supportive as, as possible while adhering to strictly, you know, the safety guidelines put out by the governor? So I think, I think that's it for me.
Okay.
Hey, hey Megan, this is Armand, so can I add something to that if you don't mind? One of the things that I think we should be looking at is maybe combination of options. So it's a, for example, if you look at India Cafe and Gigi's and, and Blue Coyote, they, they're not in that Main Street area, so they may be using some kind of different option for outdoor seating as opposed to everybody else. And so I guess we could be looking at different options, combining the options based on the feedback we're getting from, from, you know, the business owners in downtown. So that could be something we could look at. But I, I just, I just want to just say that Megan has done an unbelievable job with Linda and MBA and everybody else and it's, it's a lot of work, like Greg said, and, and she has to be commended and the team has to be commended for what they did. So I'm hoping that at the end, the result is going to be something that everybody's going to be happy with because that's what Maynard, Maynard deserves.
Megan, I think this is wonderful and I think the work that you and the EDC and Rachel with the MBA and Linda with the MBA have put in and Jack, of course, have done such a great job. I think, you know, pretty much all the options are viable. I think this is a good use of our beep money in a way that we can contribute and help all the businesses, probably a lot better than bringing in, you know, a speaker since no one really has expertise on this, on how to reopen after a pandemic. The only option I'm not a huge fan of, based on feedback I've gotten from businesses, is shutting down Main Street for a prolonged period of time. I just know from my involvement in the past from ED, not EDC, but Business Alliance Events and Maynard Fest being on that chair committee for a lot of times, businesses that benefit from it are a much smaller percentage than those that are hurt by it and we get a lot of pushback. So it would be one thing to shut down Main Street for a single day like we do for the festival and say this is our grand reopening and do it once. But I think any prolonged shutdown, I think, will be hurting those businesses that rely on people pulling up to the curb to run in and grab a pizza or walk in directly for their hair appointment or something like that. So that's the only option that I don't think is regularly viable to do over and over again. But I think we should do as many of these combinations as possible for as long as possible and help as many businesses as possible and keep getting their feedback.
Yeah, if I might add two or three things. It, it's repeating what other people have said, but Megan, Rachel and Linda have truly done outstanding work in trying to gather up all this feedback. The Economic Development Committee, as Megan indicated, deliberately voted on, okay, let's close things because that focuses the discussion. If there's a proposal on the table, you get much more focused feedback and so forth. And with the feedback that has come back from the MBA and so forth, there's very clear feedback that the businesses, all of them, retail and restaurant in that downtown Main Street area, really do not see this as viable. There has been feedback from outside that area and I'll phrase this in a certain way. The businesses outside or individuals, I think, might have a slightly romantic notion of, oh great, we can close down the downtown and we can walk around and mingle and so forth. That actually becomes part of the feedback because there is still significant anxiety about bringing people together in the short term because of the COVID kind of situation. And you really don't want to do that so that, as we continue this dialogue at this week's EDC meeting, it will be more focused on how can we create something that addresses the need for businesses on Main Street and other places, perhaps to take advantage of outdoor sidewalks and so forth, so that's the first step in the restaurant opening. Very few of the retail businesses have indicated an interest in actually using a sidewalk, but we need to have whatever is required for parking to do pickup, takeout, those kinds of things. So you really can't interfere with that as well. So, the other point I wanted to emphasize here because it sometimes get lost, as Megan did the introduction, it's the same thing, but I'm going to rephrase it a little bit. What we're trying to do as a community is to foster an environment, particularly in the short term, during the reopening phases so we can get our businesses back on their feet as quickly as possible. So environment has two definitions. One is the physical space so that it's available, useful, so forth and so on. But the second part of environment is making sure that we, the town on the administrative side, are being fast, flexible, even setting aside some things if we have to so that as we get things up, get them going, we need to ensure compliance, but let's really work so that So that as we get things up, get them going, we need to ensure compliance, but let's really work so that we're not throwing up. Hey, you gotta go through six pages of this and 12 process steps over there. Take a little risk on that side so that we can, you know, inspect it afterwards, but how can we as a community really work to be flexible around all of these things? Would that, you know, toss it up for discussion?
Yeah, Jack, thank you for, for those comments and most of them I fully agree with. The issues that I am most concerned about with any plan, and I think, I think really we just have to be willing as leaders in the community to turn it to the business community to, to work this out to be what works for them. But I would, I would be concerned mostly about public safety relative to the safety of people that are visiting these businesses. And so for that reason, I would want the police, the fire and any other necessary personnel to be involved. And it might also be an area for the, I guess we don't even have the handicap commission that we had, the disability commission that we had at one point. But, but the impact on the, the public safety, the impact on the non-restaurant businesses, which we have heard repeatedly is a concern that, you know, they, they don't necessarily use streets because they can't in some instances. And furthermore, places like the liquor store that need that traffic flow to be able to come and go, come and go. And those have to be considered. I think it's been mentioned a couple of places, but not as directly as I think, but we have to minimize the costs and I mean financial costs to the town. We can't be having police details and DPW details and you know, a lot of other requirements on the town. We don't have the resources that would allow us to do that. And that's why probably the shutting down of, of Main Street is not practical because I've said this before in meetings, I've walked downtown enough on the normal day and see wrong way drivers coming down when it's pretty clear that it's a one-way street. And add into that people sitting into the road and it's a, it's a, it's a recipe for disaster. And then lastly, handicapped accessibility is important to me, as I mentioned, that I think the, if you were to go and step off the curb on the, the triangle end of Main Street. I forget what Vic Tommel used to refer to those dips as. But the parking area is like the, the area where cars park has two little dips because the cars have been parked there for years. It's not a flat road and could cause some issues if we don't, if we're not careful, especially for those who are not as fully able as others. I'd be concerned about, you know, about that issue. But I want to, I, to echo Jack's comments about flexibility and not making people run, jump through hooks, hoops and being willing to, to allow for a quick, you know, quick decision-making is important so that this is not something that, okay, we're up and ready to go in November. Because that's going to be too late for any number of reasons. So those are my comments.
The one other comment I want to make, just for everybody to be sensitive to. In the world of social media, as soon as we began discussing these various options, there have been messages going out that have not quite correct information. Oh, we're going to close the streets. Basically, no decisions have been made. And I want everybody on the same page around. I mean, this, this conversation tonight is, is part of it. We're still working our way through it. So anytime you hear a definitive statement, oh, we're going to do X. We have not made those decisions. So just be sensitive to that, please.
Um, I have one other comment mainly directed for Megan and Greg. So putting my lawyer hat on. If we were to close down and use municipal space for short periods of time, whatever way we use it as and encourage people to go, given that we are in the middle of a pandemic and it's not going away, even if phases are reopened. Are we under any obligation to have additional insurance or post a disclaimer in any way telling people that they're attending these air, town areas at their own risk? I, I just know like when we do things as an MBA, like we have event insurance. When we have a lot of people congregating, is there an equivalent or something we should be doing as a town when we give the use of like municipal space?
Melissa, just Megan, that's a really great question and we'll look into that.
Okay.
We're going.
Double check, absolutely.
So Megan and Jack and, you know, the folks involved in the EDC and Linda and all of you guys. I don't think anybody is, you know, saying this is, this isn't a great idea. And you guys have put so much work into it and you guys are really doing the work. What, what is the, what is your timeframe? Like what, I mean, because I, unless I'm wrong and anybody on the board that wants to just jump in and speak out and tell me if I'm crazy, what I'm hearing is, is all good stuff. There's other things to work out, but I'm interested in like, what's your timeframe? And then, you know, are you going to, are you going to give us, do you think you're going to give us one or two options? Or you're just going to come to us with what you all would mean the, you know, the EDC, the MBA and the town folks that are, the town folks, meaning town hall that are involved. Are you just going to come to us in, in a meeting and say, this is the best we came, this is the plan we came up with. Do you approve? What, what's, what do you, what do you think is going to happen? And what do you think is the timeframe? Because a lot of the folks that are on the, on the call here tonight that own businesses and restaurants in town. It's, it's, you know, time is of the essence for them. So how, how quick are we looking? And how, how fast? I mean, because if you guys say to us, you know, we have two more meetings and you're done on a, you're done on a Wednesday night, say. And we don't have a meeting for two weeks. Well, that's too wait, that's too long to wait. Right? Right. For one, if you guys came up with a decision and this is the choice and this is the direction that all of you guys together agree is the best, you know, we'll call a, we'll post a meeting out enough time to get us all on the same call and approve it immediately to get it done. But what is your timeframe?
I appreciate that, Chris. This is Megan. Um, you know, I think we, I've heard from the EDC that this should be a significant main priority. And you know, I've heard that from the business community. So for me, my office, this is, this is a real at the top of our list. As we're getting more information from the state, things are changing a little bit. We just got, like I said, we just got more information yesterday about details about the phasing. So I mean, I'd hope to, to get this. You know, I can't say a specific timeline, but for, for your next meeting, but I appreciate the offer to maybe call something earlier if we need to, because I mean, we really want. And I also think I'd like to present an option that has Economic Development Committee and Maynard Business Alliance support to the board for consideration. And like I said, we, we really want to find something that works for everyone and we want to do it as quickly as possible, but as responsibly as possible, inexpensively too.
They're not making anyone happy, but my, my whole thing is, you know, in, in all, in all the meetings we've had since we've started these conversations is you know, the money, the money to do certain things that are helping certain ways just isn't, isn't available to us. But these type of, these are the type of things that, you know, everybody is, is on board with trying to help as much as possible. But I don't know, does anybody, do any of the other board folks have any comments? Melissa, Justine, Armand, David as well?
I had, I just have one question about, you know, if we decide to do something like the pocket parks or, or, you know, the pocket, pocket food courts, things like that. As far as streamlining the approval of that, would that be by business? Like I think you started to say that, that it's, you know, each business would have an, an application to, to fill out. And then would we have all of that? I, I guess I'm trying to see if we can get the approvals ready to go. So the minute, you know, the minute those are submitted, they can be, they can be accepted.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Justine. I think, um, what I, what I was hoping to get out of this conversation was a little bit of direction from the board about, you know, which, which path to choose, which I'm, which I'm hearing. And I think what we'll need to do is look at kind of our main corridors, see how many parking spaces there are, how many businesses there are. Find an equitable way to consider each request. So that, you know, there isn't one business getting several parking spaces and someone, you know, not having parking for their business. So it's those logistics there. Another kind of wrench to throw in here is that, or benefit is that yesterday, the governor stated that for liquor licenses, the licensing, local licensing authority, which is of course the Board of Selectmen, will be able to approve alterations to liquor licenses. So that means that if you did not have outdoor seating before, but you've had a liquor license, you know, this body is going to be able to approve a couple of tables on the sidewalk to serve liquor. So we just got that information yesterday or, or even today, and we're digesting it and meeting tomorrow to come up with a plan to educate the, the restaurant community about this, let them know how they should apply. And then we'll be coming to you. You know, probably as soon as possible with probably several requests. I mean, a lot of the businesses right now are being very proactive, asking what they can do. You know, with the tools available to them. So I, I feel that we will be starting to get, you know, a lot of requests in the next couple of weeks, which is good because people are really thinking outside the box.
And that's great. And I also, as you were speaking, we cannot, and I think Arman might've made this comment, we cannot forget those businesses that are not in that stretch of road. You know, there are other restaurants down, further down towards town hall. There are other restaurants even on, on Nathan Street that we have one. So, and, and something I'd like for the restaurant owners to think about if, if, if they decide to think about going into the, you know, the pocket thing. What's the likelihood that their customers would be interested in, you know, I don't know how it would work, whether it would be, because you know, when you go to a restaurant, there's an ambiance, if you want to call it that, where a waiter or waitress comes over and and takes your order and, you know, goes away and I, and comes back with your food. But if you're across the street or down the, down the way and around the corner, it, it, it doesn't create the same issues or, or how does that work? And then would, if it's going to be a takeout and then go out and sit outside, how much are customers going to be willing to want to take their food outside, sit down rather than getting into their car and going home and, and sitting down at home? You know, that's not me because, you know, I say it on education all the time. I'm not an educator. I'm not, I'm not a restaurateur either. So I don't know what my customers might want.
Hey Dave, maybe we could ask Frank, maybe Frank could chime in and see what he thinks. Yeah.
Yeah. So I would say in general, you know, if we can get many help, you know, it's, 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 it's going to be wonderful. But I would say to close down Main Street would, would definitely hurt more people. It would hurt the Becker Store and Pizza Express and I'm in the daily, it would, you know, that I've, I feel like, you know, for the grand scheme of things, that would, that would probably hurt more than help. And then concerns I would have about closing down the parking lot would be that would probably actually cost me more money to staff that, to get tables and chairs for that. And then, and then could my liquor license transferred to that area? You know, with me, you know, that, you know, I've like, so like I've, I've heard a lot of talk about expense and pricing, like I feel like the best, the best thing for me, like, and that's all that I, I can speak for would be the parklet. Because with that, you know, you know, like I, I, I was in contact today with, with my in assurance company. And that, you know, it's, you know, it's something like, I'll do whatever you guys tell me to do. If I need to get a insurance policy, if I need to get the barriers, if I need, you know, like I, I just need to know what I can do to start to grow the business again, because you know, the longer that we wait, the less chance that places have to make it through this. And you know, it's, you know, and, and then like I, I know that the outside seating can start on Monday, you know? So, so then a concern I have is, you know, if the next board, board meeting is the 16th. And then say you guys pass it that Tuesday and then maybe I can have it for that Thursday. Now I've lost a potential week and a half. Which, which for some people, I mean, we could, could make or break them. Because you know, like you look at, I, I, I had a conversation with, with my buddy. So he lives in up in Connecticut. They opened up for parklets last Friday, I believe. And he said that the feedback was spectacular. So I mean, that, I mean, that's, that's just what my thoughts are. But it, but again, you know, like I support anything that you guys do and it's just, you know, whatever my input can be, you know, and then also like with the parking area, like if you think of a place like a Gigi's, you know, you know, how difficult would it be for them to continue to do their takeout and then run a, a pop-up stand? Just the, the, you know, like the thought of it, I, I think is great, but I think to actually pull it off would be more difficult than just having the parklets. So that's all I got.
Let me add a quick comment.
Yep.
Going back to what it's, it addresses both Chris's thing and David's thing in terms of timing. The EDC meeting, which is Thursday. Given the feedback that we've gotten, which is very clear, and my reference to David's thing is we have now heard loud and clear from the business community. So the, you know, let's close down Main Street is off the books. So Thursday's morning, I see as how close can we get to an absolute set of details? Which then can come back hopefully by early next week in terms of this is the direction we want to go. But it really is driven now by the business community because we have their feedback. And we've also made note of the fact, you know, can we move it upstreet, whether it's, you know, Gigi's and things like that. So we're trying to move it quite aggressively.
How hard is it for us to just approve preliminarily parklets in some fashion? That every business can use a sidewalk space in front of their brick and mortar building as of when the government's phases allow it, because it seems like a very easy thing. Like they could even block it off with like a streamer or something to contain it, you know?
Yeah. Mr. Charles, this is Linda Thayer. Can I, can I jump in for a moment?
Sure.
Okay. I appreciate all of the work that everyone's doing and the, the feedback that businesses gave and, you know, what the board's listening to. A focus we, we need to prioritize is streamlining the process, identifying the pieces and streamline, streamlining the process. So that that, all of that can be taken care of now, whether it's, you know, just, I've heard a few things. You review for compliance and not approval. You might, we might be waiving the fees and any restaurant that currently has space could just move forward while we're working out the details for, for others. But I think that's something that we need to do. There's also, as far as having general seating, there are really strict guidelines right now with, due to COVID. Where I understand every table and set of chairs has to be sanitized before the next party moves in. So having general seating is a great idea and I would love to see that in the future, but this isn't the moment for it. So there's, there's a lot of other guidelines there as well. Go ahead.
I thought you were done. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Frank, did you?
Yeah. So I, I just one more thing, you know, you know, to go back to the streamlining, you know, like if yeah, I just a hypothetical, if you guys can say Frank, you know, like, so we want you to have this, 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 and this, and this, you know, like I, I can get all of the barricades and the fencing and the tables, you know, for Monday. You know, like it's, you know, so it's, you know, as, as fast as you guys will, will let me. I'll, I'll, I'll get any, any paperwork that you guys need. I'll, you know, it's, it's, you know, I'm at the mercy of you guys because it's, you know, so, so currently my patio in the back, I can fit with social distancing, I can fit two tables. Which is, you know, not, not a ton of tables, but I marked it off today with my frontage. I can fit 10, 10 tables with the, with the right distance. So, so enough for me. I mean, that, that would just be a complete game changer and, and, you know, and that might let me get through this on the backend, you know, and not go out of business.
So we, Greg, do we, I thought we already had in place regulations that would allow us to allow sidewalk dining.
You do, but you still have to approve it. So it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's, um, the approval process is what we're getting to and we would expedite as fast as possible. But as Jack is, and Megan has already been saying, we didn't want to just be shooting in the dark without some sort of direction from the selectmen. So when that, so with the selectmen's guidance that you're giving right now and the, and the inclusion, as everything has already been saying, but the inclusion of the business input and so forth. Now the, now Megan and the OMS team can start to develop some sort of application process where she'll, they'll try to streamline and make as expeditions as possible. They'll have the further input from the EDC on Thursday, I imagine. By Friday, we'll try to put out some messages to the businesses as to what the application may be and what information is necessary so that hopefully maybe it's Tuesday, we can have the selectmen approve it. But as, but I- But as, but I can't get over, I can't take on the responsibility of the selectman to approve the use of town-owned property, which includes the right-of-way, which is the sidewalks and whatnot. And I'm certainly not the local licensing authority, so if it's going to include any alcohol usage, it has to be the board.
So I understand that. So to that point, earlier Frank said that our next meeting is July, June 16th, but as I'm looking at all the stuff in front of us and knowing that tomorrow was our next discussion with the town moderator about the, you know, the upcoming town meeting on the 13th, we're going to have to have a meeting next Tuesday tonight.
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Okay, well, there you go.
In my opinion, you correct me if you think I'm wrong, but we'll be on the same platform next Tuesday to discuss that at a minimum. You know, and if this is, if you guys are ready with this, even if you're not ready, even if you and Megan and the folks involved, they're at the point where they think, oh, we've got this down, here's what it's going to be, we can do what we did a little while ago and approve it, you know, continue on those other things being done.
Yeah.
So I don't see any way that we're not having a meeting.
And this fits in just perfectly, because EDC's meeting on Thursday, and Jack's right, and then Tuesday, we could actually make some kind of a decision there.
Yeah, so.
And just make sure, for those who are involved in the discussion, that both chiefs are involved. You know, especially hearing Frank's plan, which sounds great, you know, 10, 8 sidewalk tables, and I hope that works out. My concern would be how that applies to public safety relative to cars coming down the street? How do we make sure that we don't have a disaster? And then secondly, sidewalk traffic as far as pedestrians that are not able-bodied necessarily, that have difficulty crossing the street, have difficulty doing various things, and coming down, and the tables are there. How does that affect it? So, and I'm not trying to block anything, I'm looking to try to find ways to make it work, but not have a disaster occur because we failed to think of something.
Hey Dave, but other cities have done this. I mean, if you go to Saratoga, that's what they have. A lot of these little parklets right in front of their restaurants with traffic going up and down the street, so.
But what do they have, what do they have to protect the people sitting in?
A lot of them are platforms, they're just set up as platforms and parking spaces in front of the restaurants. So that's the parklets, you know, most of them. So, you know, and other cities have done this too. So I think it could be done.
Oh, I've seen, you know, I've seen it in Boston, but they have sidewalks that are three times the size of.
I agree, I mean, there's a little wider side.
You might have to narrow the road, but let's not design us here.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
I mean, there's a lot of questions that you guys are working on already, Jack and Megan and Armin and the rest. So, you know, I'm pretty positive that the board is unanimous in our desire to get something on the books as quick as possible to help everybody that needs help and, you know, negatively affect anybody as minimally as possible. So, you know, I'm pretty sure we're going to have a meeting next Tuesday night, so let's, you know, let's look forward to making a decision and finalizing it Tuesday if we can.
We'll be ready, thank you so much, I appreciate all the feedback.
Thank you, thank you to everybody who's working on this.
Everybody that's putting, you know, putting the time into this project, and, you know, we talk a lot about how to help everybody, and it's difficult, but, you know, without the funds to help, we're doing the best we can, and hopefully it'll be done within a week.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask something before, if you were about to move on to the next agenda item?
Actually, I think some, there's a member of the public who wanted to say something as well.
Okay. Yes. Unmute yourself.
Fan from Gigi Restaurant. Just want to say, you know, thank you so much for all your help and support, you know, during this difficult time. And my question actually for Megan, because, you know, I agree with Jack when he mentioned the beginning that, you know, it's every restaurant, I can only speak for the restaurant business, so every restaurant is unique, you know, in their own way and their location and all that stuff. So one way may not work for everybody. So I think it'll be, you know, if you guys be more flexible on, you know, working with each individual restaurant individually, you know, rather than, you know, having just a one, you know, method for everybody. And that wouldn't work well. And also, I just want to emphasize how important it is, you know, as far as the timing for the approval, because, you know, maybe next Monday or Tuesdays, that's when we can actually, you know, open phase two. And usually phase two lasts about three weeks, you know, until it moves to phase three, which is a lot more flexible. But, you know, if we lose, you know, a week or, you know, five days, you know, and we have to put in all this investment as far as, you know, building barriers and, you know, fencing around the front of the restaurant to put outdoor seating, you know, it's, you know, and you'll only be able to to function for, you know, five or seven days, you know, it doesn't seem like it's worth it. So as far as the application process, do you have that in place yet, Megan, or?
No, we don't, fam. You know, we've been kind of just waiting to hear what the governor's been saying and then kind of having this conversation, but we will have something together for next week. All this week, we're going to work on exactly what we need, you know, certificate of insurance, what type of barriers are appropriate, make sure whatever we kind of talk about is vetted through public safety, and, you know, think about accessibility. So we'll have something as soon as possible, hopefully, beginning, you know, towards the end of this week, and then it will go to be approved by the selectman on Tuesday. But I just want to share, I mean, I completely understand how valuable this time is, and I just want to emphasize that this is a real main priority for us, and we're trying to get it done right, but as soon as, as quickly as possible. I appreciate your patience as we kind of navigate this.
No, thank you so much.
Thanks. Any else? Gregory? Yes, Frank?
So, I'm sorry, so just one more question to piggyback on that with the application process. So then would it be, say in theory you gave me a permit for the street for Tuesday? So would the permit have a timeline? Or would it be in phase, during phase two? Or would it be during phase two and three? Because they're even saying in phase three, you're still going to have the unlimited occupancy. You know, so has there been any talk about timelines for that?
I'm thinking it'd be longer throughout, you know, beyond phase two. I think this, I mean, this is just kind of my perspective, but working, you know, with our public health professionals, I think the focus on outdoor dining is going to be a critical element of the summer. So I wouldn't be, I don't think would be asking businesses to invest in, you know, kind of equipment, and then say, oh, you know, you're off the street now. I think we're going to have to assess it on a case-by-case basis to make sure that, you know, the setups are working. And, you know, if it isn't, they might need to be adjusted. But, I mean, at least from my perspective, I think this would continue, you know, beyond phase two at this point, especially if phase two is only two weeks. But we'll talk it out with the EDC this week on Thursday.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So Greg, anybody else? Should we move on to the?
I have a question, I wanted to make a comment. Becky?
Oh, hi Becky, go ahead.
Hi. After talking with Ryan Melville at the ABCC, for any of my, any of your liquor licenses with restaurants, what the board needs, if it's a form that Megan creates, I need a copy of that form, I need a map, and how many tables will be outside? And I need that particular information. I need to send it to the ABCC. Once you approve it, I have to then send it to them. They will go over any questions. They may send out an inspector to review it at any given time. The ABCC has rights to say this is not acceptable after the fact. I mean, even though you're doing the initial, they may need to modify it a little bit. So as long as that's clear, the other piece that I need to do, any of the liquor licenses, I have to reprint each liquor license and modify it to show that we gave this temporary license. This temporary license will be good and valid until November 1st, unless revoked sooner.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make this brief. So what I added to the board docs today, because we were just notified by today or even last night, the Town of Action approached Maynard staff, so myself and Megan, and asked us if we'd be interested in partnering with them in an application through the state's Department of Housing and Community Development to use the community development block grant COVID-19 to support microenterprises, which is only five, you know, businesses with only five employees. They wanted to have the Town of Action be the host community for a regional collaboration between who they invited, Maynard, Littleton, Foxborough, Westford, and Carlisle. So this afternoon, the town managers and town administrators of most of those towns spoke. We had a Zoom meeting just to kind of gauge interest and see what sort of the concerns were. One of the primary concerns was administration of this. Like any grant process, it takes people to, as everything we were just saying, even applications for a parklet, someone has to develop the application and administer it, and then, you know, determine eligibility and, you know, what, and making those eligible. So it's, so it's not as straightforward as just signing onto a grant that may be able to help businesses with five people or less. But we were certainly not opposed to the idea. So what I'm asking of the board is not necessarily your approval, I would have asked for your motion. I'm just asking, is there any objections? I want to make sure that we don't move forward with this if there's any objections from the board.
Anybody object?
No. Quick question, Greg. Did you get any sense as to the equitability as to, you know, with Acton? How do we assure that, you know, Acton doesn't get the whole shebang and we're putting in our effort and getting nothing?
So we didn't get that far, we didn't get that far. And it's, you know, calling out the big boy in that group, which is Westford and Acton, probably wouldn't have done us little or much good. So, no, it was much more civil before we got to that. But, no, it's a good question. I thought about that too, and it's not unlimited amount of money. But there's a couple of other regional collaborations. Ashland, I think, is doing one, Bellingham is doing one, but with much, you know, different scale of projects and partnerships of communities. So Acton found out about this, and I'm grateful that they reached out to us, see if we can get on board. But it might be a long shot, because I think the application is due shortly, and we haven't found this, like, third-party administrator yet. So I just want to inform the board, make sure everyone's okay with it, and we'll move forward. Very good, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, on to number seven on the agenda, the annual town election warrants. And then there is a motion on the item, and it's a motion to accept and approve the annual town election warrant for June 23rd, 2020, as shown, authorize the use of our digital signatures for processing as well. Do you have a second?
Second sec.
Thank you. All right, Gregory, you want to?
So it's actually, it's relatively procedural. Let me see, is Michelle Jenkins the town clerk still on?
Greg, yes, Michelle Jenkins, town clerk.
You want to just briefly describe what we're asking the board to do?
It's very, you know, every election, the warrant has to be posted around town, which Mary McQ, the constable, will be picking them up Thursday morning and post them. Very standard procedure.
Right.
Okay. All right. That being said, anybody on the board have any questions in regards to the election warrant? Okay. Who was in favor, David?
Yes.
Armin?
Hi.
Melissa Levine-Pirro?
Yes.
Hi.
Christine?
Yes.
Yes as well. So that's, all right. So Greg, on this one, motion to pass over Article 17, what does that mean?
So let me, let me describe. So now you're on item seven, no, eight, yep, 8A. So, I mean, Megan can probably explain in more detail, but the gist is, we found out from the Mass Department of Transportation that the project to reconstruct the Florida Road Bridge, which is behind the post office, that project is going to be bigger scale than we thought it was going to be. And for a couple of different factors, it's not just a bridge, it has utility lines going through it, you know, like the town's utility lines. And so basically, through the further development of the planning and the research that goes into that bridge, the reconstruction of it, they found out it's a bigger project than we thought it was going to be, so it may require more easements. So the town meeting article was to request the taking, which is easements, for, you know, that work. So like, if the town's going to need more access to more land that's privately owned to do that construction, so it's for a public good, but if we have to partner with, and take some, or not take, the article is for take, but it's, we're requesting a partnership with the private owners of surrounding land to do that bridge work. And because it's going to be bigger, the article is not accurate to what we're asking the town to do. So the plan has shifted, which is to not have town meeting approve this old plan with this smaller scope, and to re, and then now what we want to do is develop a new article with a bigger scope that would be proposed at a future town meeting, most likely, the special town meeting scheduled in October. So it's, so the selectman would have to do similar to what we did the last annual town meeting, which is withdraw the, if you recall, the minimum maintenance property bylaw that wasn't quite ready for showtime at the annual town meeting. So it's relatively procedural. What happens from time to time that an article just has to change, or it is withdrawn. So we requested Lisa Mead, town council's advice. She says you can make a motion to pass over an article.
All right.
Now, but I, and further that, Mr. Chairman, is that town council adds that, so you make a motion tonight to pass over it, and then at the town meeting itself, when you as the chairman would be making the motions for the articles, you would, you would make a motion to withdraw the article. It's, I don't, it's relatively uncontroversial.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess the motion that's here reads, motion to pass over Article 17 on the June 13th, 2020 annual town meeting warrant. Motion to approve an addendum to the sponsor comments of Article 24 on the June 13th, 2020 annual town meeting warrant as provided. Do you have a second?
Those are two different motions, but I will second both of them.
Yeah, it is two different ones, that's right, two.
Yeah.
So we, so let's just do Article 17. So Article 17, does anybody have any questions other than what Greg already shared with us about that? So we'll just vote on that one right away. David?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yep.
Christine?
Yes.
Yes as well. And then Greg, could you just give us the, what we need to know about Article 24 as well, please?
Yeah, so just, we had an error when we were doing over the various versions of the warrant and trying to get the warrant published, and we didn't include the correct comments for Article 24. Article 24 is, oh, it's the home rule petition for basically giving Russell's convenience store an all liquor license, you know, requesting town meeting approval of the home rule petition that would then go to the state. But the comments were for a different article. I think it was about changing the name of the board of selectmen to select board. So when we published it, it had the wrong comments. So now we're asking the selectman, I guess it's your warrant, to approve an addendum, which would have the correct comments. So we can't change the warrant that's already been published. We're adding this that has the correct comments.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions about that particular item? Will we take a vote on it? All right, those in favor of the motion, David?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Yes as well, so that's, those are done. Thank you. And then now on to the planning for town meeting, Greg, do you, I don't know what.
I can speak briefly to kind of update the board and the public. So the plan is still in the works. We're still moving forward with going to Mill and Main for the annual town meeting on June 13th at 1:30 PM. I also will note that I drove down to that parking lot I also will note that I drove down to that parking lot today so that I could tune into 91.7 WABM to listen to the test. We tested the broadcast and it worked. So I was sitting there in the parking lot. I saw a couple of WABM kids all with masks on. They were being, they were being appropriate. And and I tuned in to hear Mark Menager cut into the broadcast and say, you know, this is WABM testing for the June 13th annual town meeting. So the broadcast works. So the planning has been go, you know, ongoing for the number of weeks. We have another meeting tomorrow morning where we'll continue to develop the plans. But we're really kind of getting to the final stages here. I've been really impressed with with all the collaboration that's happened amongst the various stakeholders. A lot of work and a lot of credit has to go to, of course, the town moderator, Dick Downey. Has, as obviously it's his show and in partnership with Michelle Jenkins as the town clerk for who's responsible for the administration of it. And then you have Kyle Brainard, the head custodian, has put in a ton of work to to get the logistics in hand and in preparation for this, as he normally does. But this is so much more to, you know, so we will have bathroom facilities, but it's for emergency purposes. So again, I, I strongly encourage the public to use the bathroom before they show up to the parking lot. But the the idea is to minimize exposure as much as possible to to the attendees, both voters and for guests and for and for town officials that are arriving. We really want to make sure that people can stay in their cars, that that with few exceptions do people have to really, you know, get up close and personal with anybody, you know. They'll do a drive in while they'll, while they'll do the check in process on the voter registration rolls. And then they'll go to a parking space that's going to be, you know, directed. And I believe that's the police officers will be directing people to go into the various aisles. And then if there's a question, you know, we're going to have a a microphone on a boom so that people don't even have to get close. So we're really trying to think through all the different details and there's a lot. It's going to be complex. But like I said, I've been really impressed with the with the with the conversations and the discussions and the the various lists that we've been going down. There's probably going to be something comes up on game day. So I know I've said this before, but again, I ask for the, for the, for the town meetings patience and cooperation. We're trying to do the best we can and get this pretty vital, pretty vital event for New England style democracy of this town meeting. We're trying to get this accomplished successfully. And, you know, this is the way we're having to do it and and other towns are going about this. I heard Auburn, I think, is also doing a drive in style. So I'm hoping we're the first for for this year, just so we can have that claim to fame. And and I think it should be successful, but I do, I do ask for everyone's patience. I don't, is if, I don't know, is Dick, are you on the, are you on the call?
I don't see his name.
Oh, I don't see him.
Okay. Well, does anyone want to add anything? I really just wanted to update. And then I also want to get any questions of the board. So so if you have any questions, you know, Justin's waving her hand, Melissa's waving her hand. Go ahead, go ahead.
I, Mike, I just have two questions. The first is, are we, I know that the moderator has been, has said that he's going to combine the articles so there are fewer votes. It is still a really heavy warrant, you know, with the 29 articles. Are we going to know ahead of time which ones he's combining? Like, are we getting a list somehow of that beforehand?
Yeah. Yes, I believe, I believe he's already, I believe he's already reported which one is going to be, but I have to double check. So he, so he arranged the the articles. If you look at the warrant, the warrant describes the type of vote that's required. So it's a secret two thirds majority. He tried to, he tried to consolidate those so that, and I believe he's trying to do all, if not most of the of that type of of vote requirement in one vote, which which is significant, like that's, that's a big consent agenda, so to speak, for for that. But that's, that's his intention, as you said, to try to, to try to consolidate as many of the votes as possible. But yeah, I'll, I'll double check with Dick to make sure that we can give you the information as to what. I mean, but that's also, that's also depends on if the town meeting allows for that level of consent agenda. They can, they can pull certain votes that they want to be have voted on separately. So we'll do the best we can, but I'll check with Dick.
Okay. And then the other thing is just Ken, and I think I've mentioned it before, as far as the whole fact that it is a drive in is I don't, I'm not necessarily comfortable that anybody knows that other than the people who who are in this realm talking. I know I did see the article that Megan linked from the Beacon that did mention it. But even on our town page, it just says that we're having it at Mill and Main, but it does not say that it's a drive in.
Okay.
So I think that like, I think the car is going to add a little bit more confusion for people. So I think we really kind of need to get a lot of word out there that this is going to take a little time. This is going to take a little patience. This is great that we're doing it, but we really need to get the town on board. If they're going to come out, they need to be prepared.
I appreciate that. That's helpful.
We have a reverse 911 going out tomorrow night. That's really going to explain that very well. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Your script, the script for that is attached to our documents, right?
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
There's going to be a couple reverse calls right between now and then.
Tomorrow will be the first, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You better let them know that they use, they need to use the bathrooms at home before they go there.
It's on there, yeah.
Good.
I don't know. Tell a bunch of, a bunch of adults went to pee. Melissa, did you have something to add? You want?
I just have a question. So all of us that are normally on the stage, you know, finance committee, school committee, and board of selectmen, are we also going to be in our cars just closer to the podium?
That's, that's correct. So, yeah, that's exactly right. So only, only a handful of people. We're trying to really minimize who absolutely needs to get out of their car. So. Well, yeah, so.
Well, don't worry, don't worry. Dick is rolling kit to expose me, too.
Yeah, yeah. So, right, that's exactly right, Melissa. We'll try to keep everyone in the cars.
Chris is coming in a horse and buggy.
Right?
Right?
Yeah, yes, Lydia, go ahead.
All right, question. So the slideshow that we need to do, I know it's due tomorrow. We have eight slides. Should we try to reduce that down to four?
That would be great. So so first, this is Lydia Clancy. She's on the.
Sorry, Lydia Clancy, school committee.
That's okay. So we did receive your, the slides and yes, there was eight. You know, the first slide is just school committee budget presentation.
So that's what I've been doing is working on.
Yeah, yeah. So that would be fantastic. If you get it to Becky tonight, that would be even better. Yeah, yeah, because the, so let me, let me kind of fill people in. There, because it's a parking lot and I was there today and if if you've never been there, it's it's big, which is the advantage of having in the parking lot. But what it also means is you can't see as well when if we were going to do a stage and a and a big screen. You know, like it's not, it's, we're calling it a drive in, but there's no movie screen. So the idea is to give information ahead of time, either through online, which we plan on doing, the presentations online. And but primarily, we're going to be, you know, reliant on the media of the printed warrants and then whatever other printing, you know, instructions or or the budget presentation with school committee, for example, and the finance committee and a map of, of, you know, Blue Jay Street, you know, that that was with that article that we're going to do the land transfer on. So we're going to pass those out to people because there, because there's not going to be a screen to look at. So that's why Lydia is bringing it up and I appreciate it, that if we can minimize how much paperwork we have to, we have to produce and print off, saves a little bit of money, saves some trees, but it also means that much less people have to kind of like flip through. They can just have it right.
Um, second follow up, sorry, and then I'm done. Um, will these be black and white copies? I don't, I'm trying to determine.
So preferably, yes.
Okay. So I don't need to worry about color and whatnot. I'll just make it black and white.
I would, that's, that would be my preference, but I'm not, if you, if you feel like you need to have it in color, so be it. I know the Dick wants the, wants the map in color. So but, you know, if it's budget documents, I hope those could be in black and white.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So Dick is also, just for everybody that's interested, Dick has also floated the idea of having somebody make a short video presentation for each article to be shared with the folks out there, the the video presentation of a, of the, say, the school committee's presentation. Somebody make a short video and he was talking about, you know, posting those somewhere, wasn't he? Has he given up that idea?
I don't know if, so that was an idea. I don't know where we are with that. I, it's not, it's not, it's obviously not. It's not easy to do in any other time, but now it's especially difficult to do because the school is closed. So like our our primary resource, which is the WABM studio, is not open. So it's, I don't know if we're going to be able to get pull that off.
Yeah, I just know that it's been something he's asked about every meeting, so.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I could perhaps comment on that and add something.
Yes, please.
So this is Ken Estbrook, Finance Committee. So that was an early idea to do the presentations. I think what we ended up is letting people know that they could attend one of either of the Finance Committee public hearings, the first of which we had yesterday evening and the second and final of which we have next Monday evening. And people could ask questions and get information at those public hearings as opposed to any videos being posted.
Okay. All right. Anything for the town meeting planning, any other questions, concerns? Can we move on to the review?
So, Mr. Chairman, actually, we just spoke to this. So what I did is I drafted a presentation. But I also want to point out that Dick and I have been talking about whether we even need this presentation. So so with a, with a few exceptions, as I've already said, the Finance Committee wants to provide comments about the town, town budget. School committee provided, provided a presentation and that map. Otherwise, the sponsor comments are included in the warrant, which we already planned on printing 300 copies of and have available. So there's no, there's no additional information. You know, so some annual town meetings or special town meetings may have like a citizens petition like we did for Rockland. And so that, 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 that lead petitioner had like 10 slides or whatever it was that that he wanted to show at town meeting. We don't have that in this case. We don't have, with those, with those exceptions, everything's already in the warrant. So I asked Dick, do we really need to print off 300 copies of something that's already in the warrant? And and so we may, we may be sort of retracting that. We would still have this information on the, on the website because it's just as easy to put it on the website ahead of time. I just want to share with the board where we were with the, with drafting that, that presentation. And if, and if Lydia or or, you know, it gets us a different version for the school, that's great and we'll incorporate that.
Okay. All right. So what I want to, item nine, which is a review of a board meeting dates for 2020 and 2021. That's that's in part of the executive minutes. So if anybody, anybody have any questions about that? And there's a motion to accept and approve the draft meeting dates for 2021, 2020 and 2021 as shown. Do you have a second for that? Thank you. All right. So I don't know, does everybody have that up? I don't, I don't, I don't see any dates that raise a concern for me, but who knows?
I'm probably going to end up missing two of them, but it doesn't matter.
Well, that that all gets adjusted as the.
This is just the bit.
This is just the preliminary draft, right?
Yeah. So this is the first pass of our meetings. I think it looks pretty typical. Yeah. All right. So unless anybody has any major concerns about it, which I haven't heard, we'll vote on that. And David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Yes as well. All right. All right. Greg, any, any, are there any financial conditions updates?
Yes. So I provided the end of year report. It's, but it's still, it's still some projections, obviously, because we're not done with the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30. But it's a, it's a report to show both what we have up to this date and then as well as, you know, the the final couple of months of of the fiscal year. And and it kind of goes down both the revenue projections as well as, you know, in comparison to the expenses, which would then provide either a surplus or shortfall. So I can make a long story short because I went over this at length with the, with the, with the budget subcommittee. But I'm definitely open to any questions if you have it. But the bottom line is with these current projections, we should end up in the black for the, for the end of the fiscal year. Now, which is good, very good.
Ken Estbrook shut Chris down.
What happened?
I don't know.
I heard Ken's name said something about shut this down. But Ken's mouth wasn't moving, so it wasn't Ken speaking.
All right. So I'll go on, I'll go on. So, so, Mr. Chairman, we just, I just want to point out that, that we're going to be okay for the, for this current fiscal year. Like there, there is obviously some shortfalls in in local receipts, meals tax, SIs taxes. But but it's, but, you know, we, we were fortunate enough to have a couple of non-recurring revenues. We, we got $200,000 from, through the 120 and Parker Street Mender crossing memorandum agreement. So basically the mitigation payments and whatnot, but you know, there's still some shortfalls that we're going to address. But as far as like the end of the year, we were going to be in the black, which is good. And then that means that that, that, that will kind of help us going into the next fiscal year. But the next exercise is what about fiscal year 21? So right now, we're, we're, you know, we will continue to a large degree, the spending freeze, so to speak, of the various town departments going into it, which is only goes so far. I mean, the, the school committee is technically in a spending freeze because they're not open. But, you know, when they, but when they do open, they're going to start up to start spending money. So I gave some direction to the town departments to start coming up with, you know, a couple of different options for, for, for addressing the shortfall within individual offices and departments. I asked them to come up with three scenarios, reduction of the operating cost by 2%, 4% or 8%. And they, and they'll come back with with their recommendations for what they could. I'll just say it cuts to their operating budget fund, not not utilities, right? So I'm not talking about water and sewer enterprise because, you know, we've talked a lot about that. I'm talking about, talking about, you know, because I, I don't know right now. I have a couple of big uncertainties when it comes to revenue, you know, as I said, local receipts, meals tax, SIs taxes. We're still developing what the projections are going to be for those and for property taxes and local aid. So I don't know what the local aid number is going to be from the state and I don't know if it's going to be an impact to just unrestricted government, which is, you know, to the town mostly, or if it's going to be chapter 70, which is education or a combination of the two, or how much. So, so we're working. We as in I have to, obviously have to give a lot of credit to the finance team, Mike Guzzo, Cheryl Kane, Angie Merima, to try to come up with as best we can, a couple of different scenarios of what the revenues may be and where we might be short. And then, so that's, that's happening. And then see what the departments think we can cut, come up with some recommendations and then I'll, and I'll provide that to the board and and obviously incorporate the budget subcommittee with that. And and the superintendent's office is also informed of the direction I gave to the town departments. But obviously, it's a separation between authority. So, so, you know, she'll have to figure out her direction. But the school department's in kind of a funky position because Mary Jane Rixon is, her last day is June 30. The school business manager, Irene Hul. I'm not sure when her last day is, but it's coming up, too. So that they, they have, they have their work out with them when it comes to trying to prepare for the next fiscal year. But we'll try to keep them informed, of course.
Hey, Greg, Greg, the one positive thing is that Greenstone will come on our radar at the end of the year. So you're looking at some revenue from there that's, you know, should be helpful.
Yeah, yeah. And and that's a good point. So that's, but that also kind of contributes why it's so hard to project. Because you're going to have, you're going to have. Yeah, there's, there's opportunities and challenges and, and so.
Look at the school committee raising their hand to speak.
I see that. We're, people are getting pretty good.
Hi, Lydia Clancy, school committee. I just wanted to say Irene Hul's last day is June 30 also.
There you go. So unless the board has any questions, that's all I have.
I don't. Does anybody have any questions for Greg about the spreadsheet, the financials? All right, on to our favorite part of the report, the town administrators' report.
I hope it is the favorite part of your report.
Some weeks it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So a couple of things I wanted to update the board on, but it's all obviously uploaded into into board docs. A couple of things to highlight, the dog park is opening back up. You know, the May dog was really excited about that and and. You know, the May dog was really excited about that and, and we were, so when we found out that the governor's, uh, uh, was allowing for dog parks to back open, we worked with them. They developed right sort of rules and regulations. So I'm, I'm impressed, um, with, with the sort of management that they have over that. Want to point out, I'm sorry. Let me just see if there's anything else I want to point out really quick. We're still continuing with the Collins Center developing financial policies and that will also inform forecasting pretty crucial right now. Oh, and then this is also something I want to commend the municipal services for all the work they're doing, but, um, as they kind of quickly mentioned, but I think it is a pretty big deal is, uh, the Nason's, Nason Street Community Refuge Election Initiative Grant. So again, they're trying to figure out as the next step, when, when we had that, that big meeting and we had all the technical expertise telling us what we could potentially do with Naylor Court and the basin, this is part of that. So the, you know, that sort of informed what sort of grant and opportunities and planning we could do. And one was, let's try to, let's try to at least make it look a little better and, and not have so many dumpsters all over the place, right? So this grant will help us plan for that. And, um, I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm actually really grateful that all of that sort of planning came kind of coincidental at a time when we needed it. I also do want to point out that Zaxter, uh, which is the bike sharing program.
Oh, yeah, they're.
I, I just put my hands like this, like everyone can see handlebars. Is anyone not know what a bike is? Cause that's what I just did. I apologize. So, um, so Zaxter, um, unfortunately is not going to be able to be profitable enough, um, especially in this economic downturn to, to maintain their services. So they're going to be pulling out from the mill, I believe from the South Acton train station and maybe up the street from me up here in West Acton. I think they're pulling out. I'm not sure if it's completely, but certainly from our, from our area, which is greatly unfortunate for many reasons. Also a little surprising because I believe we had the, I think, I think the Mill and Main site was the most active.
It's like, we had the most uses of anybody.
Yeah, right. So that's not good, but it does mean that I hope that we're attractive for, for whoever may want to take over those assets, I guess. I don't know. Zaxter's going to take off the, if they're going to take away like the mounting mech, I don't know. But, um, I would hope that we can get that back up.
Well, who installed it? Did they install it?
I think it was them. The town did not, it didn't come out of town.
So they would take that probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to highlight that. But otherwise, as per usual, the, the, um, the library is, is working away. I'm sorry. I was going to say per usual that the whole town, the whole town administrative reports on the, on the website, but I, I am noticing that the library is going to start doing curbside pickup of materials. Um, so if you're interested in that, you know, uh, the library will be starting to do, um, curbside pickup of materials. All right, that's it. I've spoken enough.
Yeah, it's interesting.
It's interesting. Greg, I, it's not, it's not, it wasn't, it was somewhere, but, um, the, um, library boxes, they're going to come back again another time?
So the library boxes, so let me, let me, I think this is what.
Free library, the free library boxes?
Right. So, so we were contacted, I don't know, I don't know who else was contacted, but we were contacted by, I think it was a Maynard.
It made it, it was, it was Mary Brinley. So it's a Maynard Education.
Education. Yes, yes, yes. So they asked if, if, if the town, uh, would be interested in doing this and, and I think the town is interested in, in authorizing the installation of these. If anyone doesn't know, it's these little boxes, um, which has maybe a handful of books that it's kind of like a free library. Like you take one, you leave one and whatnot. Um, I replied that in other circumstances, it would probably be a green light, but considering how careful we have to be even with the Maynard Public Library, which has a staff devoted to, to, you know, management of those resources. I don't know if now's a good time to be doing free pickup and handling of, you know, I, again, trying to reduce exposure as best we can. I don't know if the time is right, but if they, whenever they were, they're going to, you know, they're going to propose this, it would require the selectmen's approval if they're going to do it in town on land. So, um, there'll be a, there'll be a more flushed out, recommendation to come, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure when that will be.
Okay. Hey, Greg, I noticed a new report from the fire department, the uptick in responses to the, the, um, digit, Maynard Crossing. It's interesting how it's already started.
That's true.
Yeah, it's not even, you know, fully occupied yet. They already get an uptick going on.
Someone told me they were, he told me they were at 70%.
Oh, are they really already? Wow.
They were at 60% not that long ago. There might be already a 70%, but that's not even with the.
70% full.
That's just the view though, right? That's not with the senior congregant care.
Yeah, that hasn't opened yet. So when that opens.
Yeah.
Although he was doing the final inspections within the last couple of weeks, Dick, Rick, Rick asked him.
That's true, that's true.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for, uh, Mr. Town Administrator's report? All right. My report is, um, my, just, just again, again this week, because it continues. Thank Becky and Stephanie and Megan and Greg and the rest of the town departments, Mike Guzzo, someone called Justin and everybody for, um, you know, keeping the town running under some trying circumstances. And, um, I just, you know, just, I don't march around town like a parade or I don't see a lot of people, but a lot of the people that I am bumping into are all, um, very happy that they're very happy. I've never heard so many people say that they're happy to live in this town, as I've heard in the last couple of months, given all the things that are going on. Even some of the most miserable people I know have told me how happy they are to live in the neighborhood. So it says, it says something about the great work that you guys are doing. And, um, so it's appreciated. And also, um, just wanted to say thank you to Mike Noble for the note that he put out in response to the, um, you know, the, um, craziness going on across the country right now is as a result of the, um, you know, the, the killing of an innocent person in Minnesota, so to speak. But, um, so thanks, Mike, for that. And, um, that's all I have to say for the week, this week. Um, everybody else? Um, Justine, we'll start with you this week.
Goodie. Uh, actually I only have a couple of things. I, um, it's, it's coming up on senior week for the last Maynard class of 2020. Um, so just wanted to throw it out there that on Friday to celebrate the, as deemed, Maynard class of 2020 day, uh, there will be a parade. Thank you to Chief Noble and to the schools for working together to get this figured out. Um, the kids will be parading from, uh, the high school around town. I think it's 117 to Main Street to 27 and back to the school, I think, if off the top of my head, um, at 2:05 at the official end of school. Um, so we are hoping for a really, really good response. We would love people to socially distant, obviously, but if you could come out and wave, that would, that would be a lot of fun. Um, and then in conjunction with celebrating that, we're also doing a light up for the class of 2020, which is at 8:20 that night on Friday, um, that we're asking people to turn their porch lights on or Christmas lights or whatever for 20 minutes and 20 seconds at 8:20, um, to celebrate the class of 2020. So, uh, so that's pretty much it. They did. I, I think honestly, the schools and the parents are doing a great job between the two. I think that our seniors this year are going to, it's not the celebration they wanted, um, but it is, uh, what a friend of mine calls, uh, better than tradition. So they're working on that.
Nice.
Great. Melissa?
Sorry, I was muted. I don't have anything, but I definitely reiterate your comments on thanking everyone and how great everyone's doing getting through this.
Okay, um, Armand?
Oh, I don't have anything, but I do want to, um, comment and, uh, mention, uh, Justine's, uh, Facebook post that she just recently did. Uh, the little video that she put together with Zach. I thought it was fantastic. It was a nice, nice job.
And Mr. Gavin?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Um, any feedback, Greg, on the, um, the opening of Art Space? Was there any problems?
Megan, have you heard it? Good. Thanks for asking. Megan, have you heard anything?
They were in contact with Kelly, um, Polatonic and talking about their procedures. Um, I'm not sure if they have opened yet, but I know they had been in dialogue and presented the information, um, to our health agent.
I can see Jeff Swanberg is on it. So Jeff, if you don't mind, would you chime in? He's on the board.
My, my understanding is they have opened the studios. We're not open to the public. So I want to be clear. It's not that Art Space is open. We're allowing tenants to go back into their studios.
Lydia, did you have something?
Um, just I, I have, I share a studio at Art Space and I was going to say, yeah, it's not open to the public. We're allowed back in, but we aren't allowed back in at the same time. So most studio people have created schedules within their studios as to who goes when, or just letting someone know that you're there already.
And, and that was something that Jerry was actually looking for. I mean, he was looking for that first step to get the studios open.
Yeah.
And then my, my last comment was added to my list tonight. I noticed when we were having the public meeting, and this is for, uh, Megan and Greg, um, that there were a couple of chats that came up on the screen. That, uh, should officially, I imagine each one of those comments need to be captured as part of the public record because it is commentary during a public meeting. So it should, if we have it, we should make sure that any chat comments are captured. Because it is, that's, you know, that's the open meeting law and requirement. Um, I don't know what they said because I didn't see them. I just saw that they were there. I don't think you, oh, you can.
You could, you could pop in it up.
Click on it now.
Click it on, it comes up on the right side for you.
Yeah, they disappeared. So I thought they were gone.
When the audio file downloads, the chats also download with it and become part of the download records.
Okay.
Oh.
Just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't in violation and that's the, uh, that was my concern as I saw these chats coming up. This conversation's going on between various people that are, that are in the meeting per se. So, um.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for asking. That's a good point.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, David. Anybody else, anything else? Okay. Um, so our next meeting is written down here as a 16th, but I think it's unavoidable that we, um, we kind of change that up and meet next Tuesday as well. Um, you know, Greg, make it a short agenda, please, but just, you know, cover maybe, um, the work the E D C is doing and get, you know, you get to hear back from them. And then maybe, um, you know, an update and finalize, um, the plans from Dick Downey because yeah, essentially it should be done tomorrow. If not, we're pushing up against it, but.
I think we actually are that, I think.
Unless there, and unless there are any objections, we'll just, we'll just have a, we'll get an agenda together for next Tuesday, June 9th. Um, just to show a hands wave if you are okay with that. All right. David's there. He didn't wave, but he'll be all right. All right. Anyway, so that's being said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Appreciate it. Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.